Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May 14, 2024 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly council meeting, both in person and virtually, and we're glad you've joined us tonight. During public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally, and a member of our staff will call on you and allow you to unmute and make your comment to council. We will start during public participation and public hearings of the agenda. We will start with members who are joining us here in council chambers, and then we'll move to those who are joining us remotely. We have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. We do ask that a couple of public comment is kept to three minutes or less. And then it's once per a public participation session. With that, we will now begin with pledge allegiance.
... and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And first up, we have real fall. Miss Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
Right.
Miss Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Solicitor, and Chief, we're here, you have the court.
Thank you, sir.
There are no presentations on tonight's agenda. One note for the record here, immediately before this evening's council meeting, council met in executive session to engage in quasi judicial deliberation on the Nut Road LP's conditional use application, as well as have attorney client privileged advice and discussion related to borough sidewalks and ADA accessibility. With that, we will move into the first round of public participation. So any members joining us virtually, if you want to raise your hand digitally, we will get to you as we, after we work through the crowd that is here in person tonight. So any members wishing to make public comment, please make your way to the podium and sign in. We, as a reminder, all, all members of the public wishing to make comment, if you can state your name and whether you're a borough resident or business owner. Let's go.
Thank you. Good evening to you all. I already signed my name. It's Barbara Cohen, President of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center. And we, as many of you already know, own the oldest, it's called Ferris wheel, but it's not. It's Phoenix Wheel, made here by the Phoenix Bridge Company in 1895. We have owned it since 2008. We know how it's going to go together engineering wise, and it is a treasure. And I have to say thank you to be working with Jeanine Crack and Kelly Getzfried with regard to a gentleman by the name of Gern Yeager, the owner of Specialty Metals. And he has now moved the wheel from where it has been for 12 years. We originally had planned to put it across the street and up the hill from the Foundry Building, and that was approved by the Planning Commission and Borough Council. But Berwyn Property Group unfortunately sold that property to the, the company that took it off the plan. And so I am so grateful for our 30-year loan agreement with the borough once we have restored it and installed it adjacent to the French Creek Trail on the borough property. I am very happy to share with you what I understand is on your consent agenda for this evening. We went to the Parks and Rec Committee because every year we have a celebration in October to honor either someone or a husband and wife like Tom and Lauren and Dave and Sue Meadows and others who we have honored over the years. This year, our honoree is the Phoenix Wheel. Because now that it has been moved and that Specialty Metals has signed the contract with the borough, we want to have a major donation program to meet the financial needs to restore and install the wheel. So I'm here to thank Borough Council. I understand from Kelly Getzfried that it is on your consent agenda. And I am grateful for your support. So if that's wherever it is on your agenda, then I wanted to thank you all for approving that this evening and save Friday evening, and it doesn't conflict with any First Fridays. Jean and I worked that out early on. So thank you for your courtesy, your kindness, and your support. This is something extremely special. So as with the Foundry, with the mural, now the wheel is moving forward or starting to spin into its restoration process. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
John McPhee, Business Manager of Diving Cat Studio Gallery, 246 Bridge Street. Last evening, I, late last evening, I sent an email to Mayor Pete and to Chief Marshall. I tried to CC all of you, and through my own operator error, had a whole bunch of bounce backs. So obviously, I did something wrong, but I put a copy of my email on your desks. Far too frequently, police departments are not giving credit for quality work and for being an awesome part of the community. From the, from the email that I sent, you, you see that at Diving Cat Studio Gallery, while it is very rare, we recently had a very significant theft. And working with Chief Marshall, Corporal Gray, and Officer Rondou, they were successful in tracking down the individual, contacting them, and all of the merchandise was returned back to us. Corporal Gray and Officer Rondou consistently communicated with us by phone as well as by stopping into the gallery. Their work was professional, friendly, courteous. They did an awesome job, and we are very grateful. And I wanted to put it in writing that it was acknowledged, and I also want to acknowledge it publicly that they deserve the credit for the quality work that they do. And all of the police officers I've, I've met, I didn't realize how large our police department had grown. And I've probably met about half of the officers through the downtown in what we do at Diving Cat Studio. And it is a pleasure to work with them and have them a part of our community. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you all.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Thomas. I've been a resident of Phoenixville for 50 years and live on Maple Avenue. And I'm a member of Diversity in Action in Phoenixville. This is an echo of what we talked about a month ago, and we're back to kind of continue the conversation. What makes for healthy communities? Persons are good stewards of land and property. Resources exist for everyone. Everyone matters, has voice. Leadership involves service to others. And groups form to help the whole community thrive. Phoenixville is a growing and changing complex, but it also has nearly 50-plus not-for-profit groups, who I believe exist to create a healthier community. If you read the mission statements of the nonprofits, their purposes span environmental concerns, medical availability, equitable housing, job training, celebration of cultures, education for leadership, diversity in all areas, the arts and the valuing of every person, every voice in this town. One of the significant ways Borough Council could affect the health of our community would be to become aware of what the nonprofits are doing daily, often without acknowledgement. They are working on the ground with heart so that all of us become the answers to each other's needs, what we were likely created to be after all. Sincerely, Nancy Thomas, Diversity in Action.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see all your faces. It's an honor to be a part of the Phoenixville community. My name's Chris Keller. I live on Fourth Avenue in town. And I've been here the last two months to, and had asked for a task force or a group of people to get together to talk with the nonprofits that are holding events in town to talk about the pricing, the cost of security and police force, the cost of trash removal, setup, tents, all of those kinds of things. So I'm hearing from the nonprofit groups, what did I hear from council? And I don't have anything to share. We did get an invitation last month to come to the policy meeting, and that policy meeting was on Tuesday, was Election Day, moved to Wednesday, and it was canceled. And we found out Wednesday night. So we were planning to be there. Any rate, I've been asked to follow up with you folks, and if someone could get back with me or with some of the nonprofits, we would really appreciate it. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, any members of the public wishing to make comment from our Zoom platform? Please raise your hand digitally. Seeing none, seeing nobody else queuing up at the podium, we'll close the first round of public participation again. We'll have a second round towards the end of the agenda. That brings us to item five of tonight's agenda, which is our consent agenda. Any items that need to be removed, comments, questions, et cetera? Seeing none, it was council's pleasure.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Strunfeld. Questions on the motion?
No, but just for point of order, just so those who are in the audience or waiting to see if they need to comment, it would include anything coming out of Harb. I don't think anything was pulled out. And it would include the events, the Quanis event, the car show event, the National Night Out, the Andre Thornton Day, and the Phoenix Wheel event, just if anybody. And then there are some things coming out of finance, just for point of order.
Very good. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor. Opposed, carries eight zero. With that, any, we move on to communications and council participation. Any updates from council this month? Throw something, right? It is Dogwood Month.
Well, please come out to Dogwood. We're hoping that the rain subsides. Saturday is the parade. We are celebrating not only Dogwood, but the 175th. I do appreciate all that staff have put in to help facilitate a really excellent parade, so.
Miss Dugan.
Um, a couple of weeks ago, I should have taken more notes for this, but we had the Mental Health Day. It was Mental Health Awareness Day. We had everything from, we had all kinds of puppies that were there for adoption, and we had yoga. We had so many different programs there that you can get somebody to help you with anything. It was amazing. I mean, I had so much fun. I was there for like two hours, didn't realize that any time had gotten by. And I just hope everybody, because it seems like this is something we'll be doing going into the future. And I just want everybody to be aware that at some point during the year to make it a point to come out and check it out because there are so many programs that help with anybody from teenagers to, to young children, to adults and the elderly. It's just, it's a fantastic event.
Very good. Seeing no other comment, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Ursula.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in person and those who are joining us virtually via Zoom. Just a couple of things to report from the last month, things that have already occurred, but I just wanted to give a special shout out to the Phoenixville Public Library, hosted a very unique adult spelling bee, which was a lot of fun. I hope we'll see that again on the agenda next year. Congratulations to a new business on the 100 block of Bridge Street, Fit Up Nutrition and Body Boutique. I also wanted to give out a special shout out to one of our high school students, Vivona, who actually coordinated in conjunction with Domestic Violence Center of Chester County, a Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event, which brings awareness around assault, especially as sexual assault on women. And that took place at Reeves Park this last month. So congratulations, Vivona. Thank you for putting that together. She had a number of volunteers from the high school as well as the National Honor Society. Thank you for doing that. A special shout out to PACS, Phoenixville Area Community Services, for their Empty Bowls event. It was extremely successful. We were also very fortunate last month to open Hankin Manor, which is one of the affordable senior living facilities that we have here within the borough of Phoenixville. When you have a chance, we would encourage you to go and see it. It is absolutely beautiful. On a call today with Chester County's Department of Community Development, they were just raving about how beautiful it was. So thank you so much to the borough staff, the Borough Council, who made that possible, as well as the Hankin Group. It really is a beautiful facility, and we're very excited to have it here within the borough of Phoenixville. Another opening that took place this last month was Better Days Ahead. They have worked in our community for a number of years. They focus on outreach for those who are currently unhoused. They now have a new home within the Presbyterian, Presbyterian Church on Main Street. I hope I got that right. I apologize if I didn't. Presbyterian Church on Main Street, where Mom's House used to be, is now their new home. And so they're very excited to be able to have space and to expand their outreach. Also, a big thank you to the borough staff and really our entire community who came out for the 175th birthday party, as well as the barbecue at our firehouse. Our Phoenixville Area Learning Center just had their Cubs Dance, which was a lot of fun. I apologize to those who are watching out there for not having been a better Cubs line dance leader, but I will continue to work on that. Crescendo of Phoenixville, for those of you who may not be familiar, Crescendo offers absolutely free violin lessons to any students. Within the borough of Phoenixville, it's all through Barclay Elementary School. They just had their graduation ceremony last weekend, and they did a silent film where then they played the violins as the soundtrack to the silent film. So it was really extraordinary. If you have a chance to check out that program, it's just really a wonderful program that brings students throughout our community, together elementary school students, and teaches them the strings. Yesterday, we were very fortunate to have our Congresswoman, Representative Chrissy Houlihan, visited with a number of our students to talk about the junior ROTC. If you hadn't seen this online, Phoenixville, unfortunately, our ROTC was in danger of closing because we had fallen under the prescribed 100 students involved in the program. Representative Houlihan and the school board have been able to work together to petition to have at least one more year leeway to get numbers up. But also Representative Houlihan is working on a bipartisan effort federally, inspired by our students, to actually decrease the number of students required to be in a junior ROTC program. And so we hope, it actually has made its way through the process already, and we hope that that will actually be signed into legislation in a couple of months. So thank you so much to our Congresswoman for always responding so quickly to the needs of our community. Also, coming up this month, our senior center will be celebrating 45 years. They have a luncheon tomorrow to actually have that celebration. As Miss Berkeley said, our Dogwood will be going on from Wednesday through Saturday. Make sure to check out the Phoenixville Dogwood website so that you can find out the changes to the parade route, but we will have a pretty robust parade this year because it will be done in conjunction with the Phoenixville Fire Department, who will also be celebrating their 150, 150th anniversary, a lot of anniversaries, which is amazing. Our patriotic celebration will take place the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. That's put on through the Phoenixville Quanis Club. So thank you for, the Quanis Club for putting that on. And also, I just wanted to wish everybody to, you know, be cautious, to be safe on Memorial Day weekend, especially as we reflect on those who have lost their lives in service of our country. Also, coming up in the next couple of weeks will just be a variety of celebrations, the Teddy Bear Picnic, our graduations, our rising up ceremonies, and our transition ceremonies from middle into high school. And so congratulations to all of our students out there who live here within the borough of Phoenixville. We wish you great luck and also congratulations on your success. On the 8th of June, we will be celebrating Chester County Pride from 12 to 5:00 PM here in the borough of Phoenixville. And that will be done, that's being put on by the LGBTQ Equality Alliance of Chester County, and they are based right here also in Phoenixville. So lots of exciting things to come. I'm sure I probably missed 100 other things as we move forward. But congratulations, and thank you all so much for being part of this extraordinary community.
Thank you, Mayor Peter. With that, we'll move on to appointments in tonight's agenda, section eight. Every month, we ask for residents to come forward and express interest in any current vacancies that we may have on our various boards and committees. Currently, we have vacancies expected on Civil Service Commission, Human Relations Commission, Tree Advisory Commission, as well as our zoning hearing board. So if anybody is interested in taking part, most of these, or most of these meet, most of these boards meet once a month or less and are looking for all sorts of talents to, to help lead and guide the future of the borough. We will move on to, we don't have any new business on tonight's agenda, which takes us to our public hearings portion of our agenda.
With that, I would entertain a motion to recess the public meeting into a public hearing on the continued Nut Road LP conditional use here.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in a hearing. Now, Arn, you will see we do not have a court reporter here this evening. Are you okay moving forward without a court reporter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, as everyone knows, the borough received a conditional use application from Nut Road LP concerning the property located at 1,000 Nut Road, commonly collectively known as the Phoenixville Plaza, requesting approval to operate a restaurant having a drive-through on the property. A hearing was opened and held last month on April 9, 2024, and the hearing was continued to this night, to this evening, on the record of last month's hearing. At the last hearing, no one requested party status, so the applicant presented its evidence and closed its case. The record was closed, public comment was accepted, and the applicant had an opportunity to provide closing statements. No further testimony, evidence, argument, or comment will be accepted tonight. Typically, if there were any material conversations or communications between last month's hearing and this month's hearing, we would enter them into the record. But since no additional evidence needs to be added to the record, I will entertain a motion to close this hearing and resume our public meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now that we are back in our public meeting, I understand that council is prepared to render a decision on the 1,000 Nut Road conditional use application.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville approves the conditional use application of Nut Road LP for the drive-through use on 1,000 Nut Road, subject to the following conditions. One, the level of service of the intersections surrounding the property shall not be decreased by the traffic visiting the drive-through restaurant. Two, the development of the pad site with the drive-through restaurant shall reduce the impervious coverage of the property. Three, no less than two parking spaces shall be reserved for vehicles waiting to be informed that their mobile orders are ready for pickup via the drive-through, which shall not count toward the required parking for the restaurant use. Four, if the drive-through is modified from a mobile pre-order pickup-only drive-through to a typical drive-through with a menu board where orders are taken on-site, the drive-through restaurant shall provide for vehicle stacking for not less than six vehicles from the location of the menu board. Five, pedestrian facilities shall be made more fully reviewed during the subdivision and land development ordinance process, but in no event shall less sidewalk or less efficient pedestrian circulation design be provided. Six, an access and use easement for the benefit of the owner, tenants and invitees of the property over the parcel identified as Chester County UPI number 15-8-16 shall be valid and of record at all times during the operation of the drive-through restaurant. Seven, and our standard conditions that the project still has to go through this sad saldo process, and the use shall be operated consistent with the testimony and exhibits presented during the hearings.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion from Mr. Moore and a second from Mr. Weiss. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, eight zero. So with that, we now have a subdivision and land development ordinance and a zoning ordinance to consider separately. Because they are ordinances considered under the municipality's planning code, we also will have to enter hearings for each of those. So I would first entertain a motion to recess the public meeting and enter into a public meeting to discuss the Chapter 22 subdivision and land development ordinance, Part IV Design Standards, Section 22-417 vehicular parking.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we are now in a public hearing on this subdivision and land develop, and ordinance. So the current subdivision and land development ordinance allows some of the required parking spaces to have a reduced size of eight feet in width instead of the typically required nine feet of width. The prior justification for this was to allow for a certain amount of smaller, compact car parking spaces. However, it is the borough engineer's opinion that the size of vehicles on the road no longer generally meet the quote-unquote "compact car" criteria, and therefore, the reduced parking space size no longer provides adequate parking spacing. As a result, before you this evening is the consideration of an ordinance amendment that would eliminate the compact car-sized parking spaces and remove the ability of new developments to install parking spaces with a width of less than nine feet. This ordinance was advertised in the Post Town Mercury on April 29, 2024, and May 6, 2024. And copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library in Post Town Mercury on April 11, 2024 for public access. This ordinance was also sent to the Borough Planning Commission, which voted seven-zero to recommend approval of the ordinance at its December 15, 2023 meeting. It was sent to the Chester County Planning Commission, which via a letter dated April 1, 2024, supports the adoption of the ordinance. And it was sent to the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission, which found the ordinance to be consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan for its March 27, 2024 order, or excuse me, letter. I will enter all of those items into the record of this hearing. Does council have any questions or comments regarding this proposed ordinance amendment?
I mean, I would just kind of throw out there, what I've been able to gather is that this is a pretty common change that's happening across the board for exactly the reasons stated by our solicitor. So I don't think things was doing anything exceptionally strange here. I think this is just in keeping with it.
Anyone else from council? Okay, with that, I would open up the hearing to members of the public who are here in person if they would like to comment on this zoning, or excuse me, subdivision and land development ordinance amendment. Seeing none here in person, is there anyone here online that would like to make a public comment on this subdivision and land development ordinance amendment?
Mr. Denlinger, there's no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, I would close the public comment period and entertain a motion to close the public hearing and resume our public meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we are back to our public meeting, and I would entertain a motion on the ordinance.
Mr. Solicitor, I'll entertain a mo, or I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 22, subdivision and land development, part four, design standard, section 22-417, uh, but vehicular parking, sorry, by allergy meds.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley and a second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance adopted, eight to zero. With that, I would entertain a motion to recess the public meeting into a public hearing to consider the ordinance amending chapter 27 zoning, part three, zoning districts.
Still moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we are now in a public hearing on the zoning ordinance, it's chapter 27, part three, zoning districts. As you all, all are aware, and I think we advertised this potentially last month. So we discussed it recently, but we've had a greater number of conditional use applications heard by council recently than, you know, we had in the past. And with all the other business that we consider, the proposed ordinance amendment changes many of these uses currently permitted by conditional use to special exceptions, thereby reassigning these matters to the zoning hearing board, which specializes in the review of zoning matters. Special exceptions are basically the same as conditional uses, except that the zoning hearing board is the hearing body instead of borough council. As a result, this ordinance changes all but three of the conditional uses, the current conditional uses, to uses by special exception. This ordinance was advertised in the Pottstown Mer, Mercury on April 29th, 2024, and May 6th, 2024. And copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library in Pottstown Mercury on April 11th, 2024, for public access. The ordinance was also sent to the Borough Planning Commission, which voted seven-zero to recommend approval of the ordinance at its April 12th, 2024 meeting. The Chester County Planning Commission, which supports the adoption of the ordinance per its April 25th, 2024 letter. And the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission, which found the ordinance to be consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan per its April 24, 2024 letter. I will enter those items into the record. Does council have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance amendment? Alright, seeing none, do, like to open it up to the public here in person if there's any public comment on this zoning ordinance amendment.
Good evening, David Sannick, Fillmore Street. No, I have a little question of figuring this out. So we're taking uses that are currently under, I ran this off from the, what would have been in the Mercury. And it has like the conditional uses. And then it talks about inner lineations indicating insertion of language. And then it comes up with a list of, doesn't really have page numbers on it. But it comes up with a list of special exception uses. I guess my question is, is there, is there a use, is there a list of by right uses? Or there are no more by right uses?
Well, number one. Dr. Sannick.
I don't see that here.
Just to be clear, this is public comment period, but I will answer your question. This does not affect the uses currently permitted by right. But, so we have not touched those sections, those sections will.
I couldn't find it. I had, I had to confess, I was a little bit challenged to find by right uses. And I said, I'm gonna ask them tonight. I mean, I tried to, but when I went to the page, anyway. Anyway, thank you. I guess my other question is, you know, I, under conditional use, it talks about, and if this is not a good question, certainly rule me out or rule me in. But it talks about adult commercial, adult entertainment. Now, they're conditional uses, but they did not migrate over to special exception there. So does that mean they're still conditional use?
That's correct.
Then why, why did, why that? I mean, almost every use got moved over from conditional use to special exception, except for those two.
Sure, again, this is public comment period. I, I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do. Ask your questions via public comment period. And when you're finished asking questions, I will do my best to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing. Alright. There's one other item here, the, I guess I'm asking for a definition of institutional uses. Is that staying the same? Or does that change itself? And maybe there is a fourth, I'll add that. Why are we switching everything out of conditional use? A lot of it to special exception? I guess I'm done. I don't, I stay in here, I go back.
You can do whichever you prefer.
I, I didn't know, was there a public hearing on this before? Did I miss it?
No, this is the public hearing right now. So, the, I, I can answer probably your first and second questions together. And I tried to touch on why we're doing this in the first place, which I think is your fourth question. A, a conditional use and a special exception are basically the same. The only thing that changes is the body that ha, holds the hearing. So, a conditional use and a special exception are both uses that are permitted uses, just, they have to meet certain elements, and the borough finds them to be of a particular interest that they want to review them with a bit more of a finer tooth comb. The difference, really the sole difference between a conditional use and a special exception is which body reviews these uses. A conditional use, borough council reviews. And they typically only hold on to the uses that they deem to be the most important, that they need to have the most scrutiny over. And they allow the zoning hearing board, really the, the zoning expert board, to review the remainder of the uses that are permitted in this type of manner. So that gets to the adult uses. Adult uses are of such a particular nature, can be so inflammatory that council wanted to retain its control to review those items. However, kind of like the conditional use we had earlier today with the drive-through, those are the types of things that they think the zoning hearing board, you know, that's, that's more of a, a development and pure zoning type issue that they think the zoning hearing board can handle. And it's the type of thing that all the other business we handle here. We, you know, we don't need to have a direct opinion on. So as far as institutional uses, we have not changed the definitions of anything. We have not added any uses. We have not subtracted any uses. We have simply modified the body that hears the hearings for the uses that were previously permitted by conditional use.
Let's ask one last question, or that's it?
Yeah, sir, you, you indicated that your public comment was over, which was exactly the, the reason I wanted you to ask all of your questions.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else here from the public that would like to make public comment? Seeing none, anyone via Zoom that would like to make public comment?
Mr. Denlinger, no hands are raised.
Alright, with that, I would close the public comment period and entertain a motion to close this hearing and resume our public meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we are back in our public meeting, and I would entertain a motion on the zoning ordinance amendment.
Mr. Solicitor, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 27 zoning, part three, zoning districts.
Do a motion by Ms. Berkeley and a second by Mr. Strenfell. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance adopted, eight to zero. Back to you, Mr. President.
Fantastic, thank you, Scott. With that, we'll move on to resolutions and ordinances, chapter 11 of our, section 11 of today's agenda. What is council's pleasure for our first set of motions here? Ms. Berkeley.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Robert House for his two years of service on the recreation board.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that, I'll read the resolution to the record tonight, resolution 2024-19, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Christopher Book as a member of the Human Relations Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Sorry. Grabbed the wrong one. Start that over again. Resolution 2024-20, we have a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Robert House as a member of the Recreation Board for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Robert House served diligently and honorably as a member of the Phoenixville Recreation Board since October 11th, 2022. And whereas Mr. House provided an invaluable service as a Phoenixville Recreation Board during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and full appreciation to Robert House for all of his efforts and commitment to the Recreation Board while performing his duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Robert House is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution recognizing Christopher Book for his year of service on the Phoenixville Human Relations Commission.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, and I'll start this one again. Resolution 2024-19, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Christopher Book as a member of the Human Relations Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Christopher Book served diligently and honorably as a member of the Human Relations Commission since April 11th, 2023. And whereas Mr. Book provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Human Relations Commission and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere and gratitude and appreciation to Christopher Book for all of his efforts and commitment to the borough in performing his numerous and dedicated responsibilities over the past year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Christopher Book is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. And lastly?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging the day of community service from the students of Valley Forge University.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Strenfell. Questions on this motion? They always do a nice job and bring out all the students to, to do a nice cleanup throughout the borough and through various specific properties, so we do appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, and I'll read this resolution for the record as well, which is resolution 2024-21, a resolution of gratitude for the students of Valley Forge University for their combined efforts in a day of volunteer service and general cleanup of the borough of Phoenixville. Whereas on April 17th, 2024, the students of Valley Forge University spent an entire day of community service by providing a general cleanup throughout the borough, thereby greatly improving the appearance of the borough for the general public. And whereas the students of Valley Forge University cleaned litter debris along various main streets, various streets in the borough. And whereas the students of Valley Forge University cleaned litter and removed weeds, brush, and trash from the public areas of borough parks and portions of the borough, or, sorry, borough portions of the Schuylkill trailer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Borough Council of Phoenixville does express its appreciation and gratitude for the hard work and volunteer efforts of the students of Valley Forge University, and further does offer their most sincere thanks for a job well done.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution regarding the submission of a Chester County Community Development Block Grant for the Paradise Street Phase Two Project.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmen Nieto. This one does not need to be read into the record. Looking forward to the application on this, it's the start of a two-year cycle for CDBG. So resolutions are required, you know, so that we acknowledge that the application was made. Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. What is council's pleasure for item E under section 11 tonight?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending chapter four buildings, part four, debatable structure ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Moore. This is a item that I was very interested in seeing this move forward. So do we have questions or comments from council on this item? Oh, was Mr. Strenfell? I'm sorry, Mr. Strenfell.
I'm just gonna quickly add that I know we discussed this when we authorized advertisement. This does two things, clarifies that demolition is required if the landowner fails to remediate abatable issues and clean up old borough contact information. This ordinance was advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on May 6th, 2024, and copies were provided to Chester County Law Library and the Mercury on April 11th for public access.
Mr. Kirkner.
Mr. President, this, this ordinance has been on the books for 26 years, I believe. And I know that because I was on council when we first adopted it. And I just want to thank staff and the solicitor for updating this ordinance. I noticed there were a few things in there, like the address of Borough Hall was updated from, from Church Street. So, but I, I appreciate the work that staff and the solicitor did to bring this into the 21st century. Thank you.
This is one of those ordinances that I look forward to hopefully having staff enforce in the short tenure, or in the short future. It is, it should have impact throughout the borough on a number of property owners that are not taking well care of their properties. So I look forward to this, having this tool to use by codes. So appreciate staff's work on this one. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries eight zero. And lastly tonight on the resolutions and ordinances, what is council's pleasure for chapter 15's update? Mr. Kirkner.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 15 motor vehicles and traffic.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kirkner, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on this item?
I'll just quickly add that it was advertised May 6th and provided to Law Library Mercury for public review on April 11th.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that brings us to section 12 of tonight's agenda. We'll start with Harb with Ms. Dugan.
The three sides were already approved on the consent agenda.
Very good. Mr. Moore, planning commission?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you also for sitting in for me last week on the, the May meeting. We do have one item for, that has been through planning commission approval. And we have action on it tonight by council. The solicitor wants to introduce and explain it.
Yes, and I believe we have the applicant and counsel for the applicant here this evening. And I invited him up, and while he comes up, I'll give a brief background. This application concerns a parcel of land in the vicinity of 212 Dayton Street, which is a part of the St. Mary's of Assumption Church, and more particularly identified as Chester County UPI number 15-6-10. The applicant proposes to subdivide a single parcel of land into two resultant lots. The current parcel consists of 2.043 acres, and Lot A will be 0.7. The current parcel consists of two point zero four three acres and lot A will be zero point seven six six eight acres and lot B will be one point two seven seven eight acres. Parcel's currently improved with a part of the parking lot for Saint Mary's, um, with some surface, uh, excuse me, with the remainder of the surface area being unimproved. Um, however, there are some sanitary and storm sewer facilities running underground on the parcel for which easements are being provided. Uh, after reviewing the project several, at several meetings, the planning commission at its March fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Ozerowski, do you have anything to add?
Um, not much, but good evening. My name is George Ozerowski for the applicant, Saint Mary's of Assumption. Really what we're trying to do here is where the parcel line currently exists goes through the middle of our parking lot. We're just moving the parcel line so it matches the parking lot. That will give the church the ability at least try to market the vacant lot and to sell it, which is, uh, what Father Hunter has been ordered to do by the Archdiocese and at least, at least look into it. So that's all this is, what we're really, only what we're doing.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I make the motion?
Not yet, not until we, uh, finish discussing with the applicant. We have to give the public an opportunity to have public comment as well. Um, but first, before we do that, does council have any questions for the applicant?
If you could just clarify that the, once the subdivision happens and the property lines are shifted, the, the remainder property which you say, um, Archdiocese has instructed the pastor to sell, is that piece of land accessible from a street?
Yeah, Penn Avenue would be the, the street that you would have access to. And it's the current way the borough staff gets down there to address their sewer line as well. So one of the benefits of doing this process is we've kind of identified a bunch of easements that need to be, not necessarily weren't on record, but that will be on record and it kind of addresses, uh, different, the actual features of the property. So the purpose would be if you look at the plan, you want, would you like to raise that up? I wasn't sure if you ever see that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. If you just wanna make sure you're speaking into the microphone when you're describing it.
Absolutely. So if you see now that roughly the, uh, the parcel is lines like this, so we're just moving the parcel line down here. So we're able to sell the green area of the plant. Simply shifting the lot line around. And I have, uh, representative for our engineering firm here tonight as well, if you have any more substantive questions.
And I don't know, Mr. Kirchner, if, just to crack, I mean, you know, is how is that particular area zoned in terms of what, what it can do?
Uh, that's residential.
Yes.
Okay. And, and this application does not involve any development at this time. Development would have to come back before us.
I think Mr. Moore, and then I may be asking what Mr. Moore was getting at, but, um, by making this change, are we um, changing the ability for what can be done with this property from its current state to a different state? Or is it the same level of residential infill no matter what?
It's, it's the same level of residential infill, um, you know, it, so the entire shaded area is the current parcel.
Hmm.
If, uh, the applicant wanted to, they could come in with a development plan for the entire parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, instead, what it sounds like they would prefer to do and what was, I believe, discussed at the planning commission is they wanna maintain the parking lot. Um, and, you know, pinch, potentially divest themselves of the darker green area.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, if they had instead decided they wanted to try to develop the entire parcel, um, what is permitted under the zoning ordinance doesn't change, but they would have more land area to do it.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you for confirming.
Any further background?
I think so.
I'm sorry, um, just a little confusion because once they sell like this piece of land, is this gonna be another place where we can just put in like three hundred apartment buildings stacked one on top of another?
Well, I, I mean.
That, is that allowed?
I, I can't, I can't comment on any specifics without.
Allowed?
Well, I, I don't know if it's allowed because it would have to depend on the size, um, because there are size limitations on whether you have to match what's on the nearest block and what's big enough that you don't have to match what's on the nearest block and.
It would be available for development.
Yes, but it's currently available for development.
Okay, so I'll argue about this later.
Yeah, we got time.
Pretty much.
I can tell you there's some significant restrictions on development. There's a lot of steep slopes on the property. There's a lot of easements on the property. So if you actually look at the property, and this is one of the things we did in front of planning, it's kind of a small building envelope that you can actually build on, at least preliminarily looking at it. We didn't really study that because we're not proposing land development. But when we looked at it, there is a, a lot going on there that's gonna limit whatever's gonna be put there.
And what is the square footage of the parcel?
I think it was one point two seven acres off the top of my head. And then, and if you look at this area, that's all steep slopes all through here. So it's gonna, and you have easements here, so it's just kind of a small area where you got to build on.
Any more questions from council?
Alright, with that, um, I'm gonna open up to public comment. Anyone would like to make comment on this application? Alright, seeing none, anyone virtually, please raise your hand if you'd like to make public comment on this application.
Mr. Dunlinger, there's no hands raised.
Alright, with that, I would end the public comment period and entertain a motion on this, uh, application.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution assist officially additionally approving the preliminary final subdivision development plan for Saint Mary of Assumption.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. Uh, we have a, a motion from Mr. Moore and a second from Mr. Kirchner. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. That will move on to Mr. Kirchner with Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not much to report. We had our first in-person meeting in four years last month. It's Schuylkill Township. Um, and we're going back to Zoom meetings after that, so. Once it was enough, it's a coming together and an in-purpose meeting, an in-person meeting was to discuss, have a workshop on our, uh, trail. Um, all the tra, things going on with, uh, trails and, um, it, it seems like Phoenixville is pretty far ahead of the other municipalities. East Pikeville is, um, making good progress too on the French Creek Trail and, um, seems like the, the connector there through Schuylkill Township is a place where the three municipalities can work together to, to make that happen when things progress far enough to get to that point. And I know our stamp is, uh, up on top of that, so. But, um, yeah, so otherwise there's not much to report.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, these are some of our upcoming, um, programs. We've got lots and lots. I've got a huge stack of like papers that show me so many different programs that we have available, but I'm in the interest of time on these. Uh, I'm just gonna tell you what's coming up this summer. So, um, under adult programs, we've got yin and massage workshop at the, uh, rec center on Sunday, May nineteenth at four thirty. Puppy yoga, and that's on, uh, the rec center on Monday, May twenty second. The Children's Garden Club, this is a free program and it's for volunteer families to help tend the children's garden and reservoir park. And you can learn the basics of gardening, gardening, bring home the vegetables you harvest and commit to the weeks that, that work with your schedule and that's all summer long. Um, also we've got an introduction to birding. This is also a free pro, program. Explore, explore the basics of birding, where to go, when to go, what equipment is useful and, uh, spend some time practicing what you learn, bring the children and offer all abilities. This is presented by the Valley Forge Audubon Society and that's Thursday, June thirteenth from six to eight at the Reservoir Park Pavilion. Now the youth programs in camp, we've got ramp up skateboard, uh, skateboarding at Morris Park, uh, May twenty third to June thirteenth. Fundamentals of tennis for, um, May sixteenth to June sixth. And there's two different age groups for that, five to seven and eight to twelve. The youth yoga and mindfulness summer camp, that's June tenth to the fourteenth. Snapology summer camp, that's from June tenth to June fourteenth. Youth quad, quad ball summer camp, that's June tenth to the fourteenth as well. And then we've got, uh, the ca, uh, the tennis camp and orange crush tournament and that's July eighth to July twenty sixth. The NFL youth flag football summer camp, June tenth to the fourteenth, and then there's a second one on July twenty ninth to August second. Science explorers summer camp, there's a couple of different things. There's fizz bag boom bot. Magical world of science junior explorers, it's, you can check this out on the website, so you can find out which one would be most appropriate for whoever you wanna sign up. Basketball summer camp, that's August fifth to August ninth. Young Ram Brands Art Camp, June tenth to the fourteenth and then July twenty ninth to August second. And then there's another, uh, third one, August twelfth to the sixteenth. Supertox Summer Camp, this focuses on developing motor skills and promoting physical fitness and still a love for sports. And that's for ages three to five on June the seventeenth, the twenty sixth, Monday through Friday, uh, from noon to three. Fundamentals of tennis summer camp at Fisher Court. And that's Monday to Thursday, six seventeen to six twenty, and then, um, there's a second one, seven twenty nine to August first. And that's for seven to thirteen year olds. And finally Chess Wizards Summer Camp. That one is at Reeves Park from July twenty ninth to August sixth for ages six to eleven. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Ms. Dugan. When we invested in the rec center, we wanted it to be fully packed in there.
Oh, there's all kinds of things going on there.
I see a full calendar every month, so it's appreciated by all the staff that does that. Mr. Carmenito with TAC.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Uh, Tree Advisory Commission met this month, uh, let, last week. We worked through, um, some resident concerns about trees and we're doing our best to keep up with the pruning schedule. Uh, additionally, we talked about our tree replacement plan and, um, one challenge we're seeing is that as we're taking down some of these larger trees, that the stumps remain for, um, uh, quite, quite a long time, so we're problem solving some ways to try to dig those stumps out and, uh, be able to replace our trees a little quicker. And the last thing I wanted to promote is on Thursday night, six P M, sponsored by Bates Landscaping and the Phoenixville J C's will be, the Tree Advisory Commission will be partnering and promoting the planting of the dogwood tree to continue a tradition that we started last year. Uh, so something we're very excited for and if you love trees and love dogwood, come at, dogwoods and Dogwood Festival come out on Thursday.
Thank you, James. Ms. Berkeley with, uh, human relations?
We do have an opening for human relations. Thank you, I, the resolution, um, recognizing Christopher Book. So we are seeking out individuals who are interested in getting involved in that capacity. Certainly reach out to me.
Very good. Uh, onto council referred from, uh, various committees. We have personnel and public safety, Ms. Berkeley?
Right back to me. Um, no action coming out of my committee, um, just checking in about a lot of great stuff happening with our first responders and emergency management. Um, and I will say we still continue to work towards, um, the hiring process for our new officers.
Good. Mr. Moore, Parks and Rec?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have two items that were not on the, uh, consent agenda. The, the first item is related to an item that was on the consent agenda that we approved, uh, which is the, uh, patriotic, um, celebration on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, um, coming up shortly, uh, the Kiwanis Patriotic Celebration. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to waive all fees associated with the rental and utilization for East Park for the Kiwanis Patriotic Celebration on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Much by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Strenfell. Questions on the motion?
Mr. Cracker Kelly, if you wanna explain, uh, they're, they essentially are just renting the stage. They're just using the stage and it's a, it's a, it's a pretty, uh, important event, uh, all the school kids come around, so.
There's really no borough services requested, um, for this event. We, they have buses that come, drop them off, they use public parking spaces, the restrooms are open. Um, and they go up on the stage and they do a celebration, a, a small celebration, um, for that ceremony, I should say. There really isn't any borough services needed. Um, if they didn't tell us about the event, we might not know that it actually happened. I think that that's kinda how we look at this one. Um, however, uh, it, they asked us, um, if those fees could be waived. Um, they did pay the application fee, um, so that is something that they would still, they didn't ask for that to be waived, but that was already paid. I think this is anything else that would, would be a part of that.
Thirty-one years without an issue. So.
So there's really no actual fees because there's not really any borough services.
There's a park user fee is what we would have charged them. And they're there for usually less than, um, an hour to an hour and a half. Um, so we, I went back and kinda looked to ask that question and that would be the only thing that, um, we would be waiving.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Uh, just because we do this every year and this is not unusual, they, since like as Kelly was just saying to us, we don't really provide any services. We wouldn't even know they were there unless they bothered to tell us because, and they're just being nice to us, telling us this. So there is no reason for them and they have never, um, had to pay the fees here because it's just, it's, it's barely of, an event that the borough has to do anything for, except just we happen to have the land. So.
Uh, I, I will say I did not vote for this coming out of Parks and Rec. Uh, I, I am a big fan of the Kiwanis Club and everything they do. I think this is a great, uh, event that they put on. It does have a very low impact from a borough perspective. Um, but I do think we have our schedule of fees, we have the rules that we ask everybody to follow. Particularly now, there's been a lot of sensitivity around that because we have raised fees in some areas. Um, so I do not feel comfortable on a principal perspective voting for this. Um, however, I do think we should find a way to not charge these fees, so maybe building that into the policy or, um, the interactions that we ask organizations to have with the borough. Um, so that these fees don't need to be charged in the future.
I think we have a way of, uh, not charging these fees and we're doing it right here. I mean, this is, you know, I hate to say this is how we've always done it, but this is how we've always done it and it kinda works. So, y- you know, it's, um, I mean, there, there's no, there, there's no impact, there, there's no cost involved for the borough. So why can't we pass that lack of cost on to the people who, um, the, the, the people of the community. Uh, and, you know, we've, like I said, we've done this before. We've even waived fees for religious organizations that were, and I, I think we just did it recently for, uh, religious or, uh, organizations that, you know, s- uh, certain application fees for, uh, building purpose. So, I, I mean, this is something we do on a case-by-case basis and done it for a hundred seventy-five years and hopefully we can do it another hundred seventy-five years. Without me.
You're not gonna be around another hundred and seventy-five years?
We got a hun, we got a hundred more.
So this, this conversation did come up in, in Parks and Rec and I, I did advocate, you know, that we need to make it transparent for nonprofits because there are nonprofits that have said, hey, like the fees are changing and, you know, costs of things are arising. And I understand that, so I think I understand where we're coming from and that there really is no costs to the borough for this. It's very different than something that requires. It's very different than something that requires police and all of that, but I do think, and I know that we've discussed this in policy before, and it has become a slippery slope, and that's why there is not currently a policy, because it was kind of discussed at nauseam, but I do think continuing to have that open conversation, which I know staff are doing, about what the fees are, why the fees are there, and then when we do choose to waive these fees, like, why is it that we're waiving it? And what, what is it that we're waving? We're not waving six hours of overtime for four different police officers. We're waving, you know, an hour at the podium. So I think again, and and just nonprofits knowing that potentially that it it's something they could request, you know, if they were just coming to the podium for a few minutes to speak, that that's something that we would entertain. So I think just, you know, to make it equitable, making sure that the public is aware of that.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven one, Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, and I'd now like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Burn Off the Bird five K, starting and ending at the Recreation Center on Saturday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, from eight thirty A M to eleven A M. Franklin Avenue between Grant Street and Fillmore Street and Fillmore Street between Franklin Avenue and Crombie Road to be closed for approximately five minutes each, conditioned upon receipt of valid certificate of insurance, meaning borough is insured.
Much by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero one. Anything else, Mr. Moore?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate, of course, my colleague Dana. Keeping us up to date on all the great stuff going on in the rest department.
Mr. Carmenito, policy?
Yeah, let's see. All right, let's go off of it. All right, first item, Mr. President, is a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending chapter thirteen licenses, part seven, peddlers, transient retailers, handbills, advertising, and banners.
Motion by Mr. Carmenio, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on this motion to advertise amendment, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Carmenito?
That's all we have, and our next policy meeting will be two weeks from tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, Sustainability Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Two items tonight. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to retain Bowman as the Borough Traffic Engineer.
Second.
Much by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on this reappointment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight oh.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Also, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to apply for or to Penn Dot for the removal of the existing traffic signals at Washington Avenue and Gay Street, and for them to be replaced with always stop signs.
Second.
Much by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Strenfeld. This is an item I've long thought was appropriate to take, so, action to take, so. Appreciate the committee moving it up. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, nothing else out of infrastructure, technology, transportation, and sustainability, except to say that our next meeting is one week from tonight in council chambers at seven P M on the twenty first. We love visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Dugan, back to finance.
Everything we had was already approved on the consent agenda.
Thank you. We'll open up the second and final round of public participation. Any members of the public wish to make comment? If you're on our Zoom platform, please raise your hand digitally. We'll have a member of our staff announce your name and unmute you if you'd like to make any comment. And then any members of the public joining us here in council chambers, if you'd like to make your way up to the podium, while signing in and stating your name and whether you're a business owner, resident, et cetera.
Will Davis, resident.
Sorry, what was his name?
Will Davis, resident.
Perfect, thank you.
Just wanted to enter commentary in agreement with, you know, having stricter guidelines around what exceptions would look like for which organizations do and do not pay the rental fee for the park. So, that was all.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other folks in the audience and no hands raised on our Zoom platform, we will close our second and final round of public participation. We also have a follow-up here with communications and council participation following public participation. If there's any items that council would like to make comment on. There is one at the end of the agenda tonight. You'll see a new section that announces our employee service anniversaries. We have eight staff members celebrating anniversaries tonight, making eighty-seven years of service to the Borough of Phoenixville, including our well-loved Public Works Director, Mr. Watson, back there celebrating twenty years. He loves the attention. I I said this to Gene this morning. I think one of the reasons why the borough is well-run and the successes that we've had is large, in large part to the tenures that we've been able to sustain with our, with many of our long-serving employees. So I do appreciate having the, just the breadth of knowledge and the institutional knowledge that goes with having long-serving employees. So I do appreciate everybody's work and and their longevity here with the borough, so. That's it for me for the, my communications, any other updates from council? Seeing none, we did have executive session at the beginning of the night, so we don't have any need for executive session following the meeting. All the staff reports are in your packets, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.